We're ready. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining in tonight. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. It's the regular board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. The time is 5:32 PM. Moving on to 1.02 roll call.
Trustee Benz?
Benz present.
Trustee Akas?
Here.
Trustee Hines? Trustee Hines?
She's muted.
She's muted. We'll come back to her. Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench here.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner present.
And if we can have Trustee Hines unmute?
I know she's here. Where is she? You see her?
Yeah, she's.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, because it said a host had been muted. Present.
Okay, we have a quorum 5-0. Moving on to 1.03 Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please stand and place your right hand over your heart? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, before we move on, I would just like to take a moment. We've had some sad news over the past couple of weeks. One of our third grade students at Ted Big recently passed away. A funeral service was Saturday, this past Saturday. I would like to take a moment of silence to mourn the loss of her precious little life and her family. So if we could just take a few moments of silence. Okay, thank you. Also, I would like to take another moment of silence for the 10 people who lost their life yesterday to a suspenseless shooting in Boulder, Colorado. Okay, thank you. And moving on to Section 2, Adoption of the Agenda. 2.01 Additions, Deletions, Adjustments in Order of Business. Are there any, Mrs. LeVey?
This is, Madam President, no, we do not have any tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to 2.02 Adoption of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as stated?
Akas, I motion?
I have a motion by Trustee Akas. Is there a second?
Benz, second?
A second by Trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hines? Michael, can you check that Trustee Hines is unmuted? Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
And then Trustee Hines?
Is she muted? Is Trustee Hines muted again?
Michael, is she able to? Trustee Hines, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, it's going back and forth between saying host.
Trustee Hines, can we have your vote to approve the agenda?
I.
Okay, motion pass 5-0. Moving on to Section 3, Closed Session declarations.
Let me send it to you.
Okay, we will be taking Items 3.02 Government Code Section 54957.6, Update Conference with Labor Negotiations for ADTA and CSEA Chapter 451. And also 3.03 Government Code Section 54957, Employee Public Discipline, Dismissal Release, Appointment and Reassignment. Okay, moving on to Section 4, Public Testimony Before Closed Session. Public comment period is administered by state law and appointed a meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the Board. Open meeting law do not permit the Board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. The health, well-being, and public safety of community members, public officials, and employees is the top priority for the Adelanto Elementary School District. Consistent with the sheltering place orders from the Governor and San Bernardino County, Board members and staff may participate in this meeting via Zoom. This meeting is in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order N-2920, which allows for a deviation of conferencing rules required by the Brown Act. Likewise, in-person attendance at board meetings will not be permitted. Any person who wish to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete or submit AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the Board on each closed session agenda item. The Board limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With Board consent, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The President may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue, and they ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Do we have any public? Any speaker requests? Dr. Mitchell?
No, Madam President, not for a closed session. Thank you.
Okay, is there a representative from ADTA who wishes to address the Board on closed session items?
They didn't sign up.
Nothing? Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, Section 5, recess to closed session. Can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
Akas, I motion?
I have a motion by Trustee Akas. Is there a second?
I'm second.
I know, second by Trustee Hines. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hines?
I.
Trustee LaFrench?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass 5-0. The time is 5:40 PM. We are in closed session.
We should return. Time to quarantine. We all know and have witnessed the rise in COVID cases following a break and holiday. An email went out stating that the dates of return will remain the same. Although the teachers have a choice to work on campus or stay home, those that do choose to work on campus could be putting themselves at risk, not to mention those staff that do not have a choice. There was no compromise or explanation, and I have to think to myself, why do we have these meetings if our concerns fall by the wayside? We stand by our CSCA brothers and sisters and their concerns of returning and some of the issues that go along with returning so quickly after a break, as what happens to them also affects us. Another issue I'd like to bring up is that on today's agenda, we see a lot of new programs that you're purchasing and approving, and we just like to caution you that more programs do not make us a better district or teachers better teachers. Although we do love to have more tools in our bag to choose from, please be aware that forcing any of these programs and over will over, could backfire and overwhelm us, which would result in not getting the outcome you might desire from these programs. My last concern is about money being used for COVID-related items. Some of that money, or maybe I should say all, or a lot of that money, should be spent on fixing the problems that we already have at many school sites that could also tie into spending of COVID money. Those things would be to replace windows that do not open at school sites, to aid in proper ventilation, to upgrade units at some of our old sites, and any other things that can be fixed, replaced, or upgraded should be done as we may not have that kind of money in the future to bring our campuses up to date and in the 21st century. I would really, really like you to think about those classrooms that do not have windows that open, most especially the indoor campuses. Now that this has been an ongoing concern of teachers who work on these campuses for many years, even before COVID. Those campuses have one way out, and that's through that one door. If there were a fire or an active shooter, students would have no way out as the one window in each class is bullet and shatterproof. So you couldn't even break that window to get your kids out. The only way out would be through the door of the class and then down the long hallway to get to a door that leads outside. Our union has brought this up many times over the years, and we've always been told there is no money to fix that. And now you've got a good chunk of change to get that process started with an added reason of ventilation for fresh air. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Caddily. Thank you for that.
Madam President, I've also been, I have a request from Diane Lee, President of CSCA, to address the Board.
Okay, we'll allow that.
Ms. Lee, you may unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Turner, trustees, Cabinet, CSCA members, ADTA members, and all others in attendance. As you as you may all be aware, we, as a district, are slowly but surely returning to our sites. Classified staff has been on the front line for a year now. CSCA's stance is to help the district in any way we can. Some of our members have gone over and beyond by helping out in different jobs. For instance, we have bus drivers helping our techs. We have proctors and security helping out in our offices. Bus drivers are helping with mail runs, et cetera. Our classified staff received an email last week informing us that our county has moved from purple to red. Therefore, our classified staff would be returning to their school sites on April 5th. What I have a hard time understanding being we are in unfamiliar territory is why do we need to return the day after Easter? Past history, as we all know, after certain holidays, Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, there was a huge spike of COVID. Not to mention other countries are currently going through their fifth round of COVID. Plus the fact that some individuals may not be contagious with no symptoms at all and can spread it to others, especially now with the different strains. Are the vaccines going to be effective for the new strains? With all that being said, I feel we should continue to work from home until April 16th and then return on site on April 19th. That gives us the 14 days that in the event that someone has COVID, it should be over. This is not only for our own safety, but also for our work colleagues, students, and community. Although we may have strong immune systems, others at our homes may not. Another issue I would like to address, we have three-hour proctors and parents. Currently, they are at home via Zoom as for their work duties, doing their work duties and engaging with the students. When we return to sites, many of our staff have school-aged children that attend our schools. Parents will be at schools, their children at home. Daycare centers are maxed out, plus it would be costly to pay for childcare. Why couldn't we have those with school-aged children continue to Zoom from home? What would be the difference if the parents are on Zoom with their students at home or school? Would you leave your first, second, third, or fourth grader at home by themselves? Please reconsider the date we return to the school sites and also our staff with school-aged children. Together, we will succeed at what we love to do, which is serve our students, community, and each other. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you.
Those conclude our comments, Trustee Turner.
Okay, so we'll we've already taken a motion and a vote for closed session. Just want to reiterate the time. It's 5:49. So we are in closed session. We should return within an hour, no later than an hour. Am I correct in saying that, Dr. Mitchell?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're in closed session. Section 6, Reconvene Open Session. 6.01 Roll Call.
Trustee Benz?
Benz here.
Trustee Akas?
Here.
Trustee Hines?
Present.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench present.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner present. We have a quorum 5-0. Section 7, Closed Session Report.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt. The time is 7:26.
The time is 7:26. Thank you, Mrs. LeVey. 7:01 Announcement of Reportable Actions Taken During Closed Session. In closed session, the Board took action to release the following administrative employees from the indicated position and reassign them to teaching or other certificated positions pursuant to Education Code Section 44951 effective at the end of the 2021 school year and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. Employee number 5917, current position principal. And for 2122 school year, the position will be teacher. The motion was made by Trustee Hines. It was a second by Trustee Benz, and the roll call votes was as follows. Eyes, Hines, Benz, Akas, LaFrench, and Turner. It was voted and motioned and 5-0. Motion passed. Moving on to Section 8, Public Testimony. Public comment period for open session items only. I will not read that public comment. It's basically the same. The Board, we can have public comment for agenda items and non-agenda items at this section of the meeting. Dr. Mitchell, do we have any?
Yes, President Turner, the Board invites Kim Abiglano. Sorry for the pronouncement of your last name. Ms. Kim, you may unmute yourself. Thank you. Kim Abiglano.
I'm here, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you. You did great on pronunciation of my name.
Ms. Kim.
Thank you for, thank you anyway.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, and administration. My name is Kim Abiglano. I'm a paraprofessional at Melva Davis Academy of Excellence and have been a district employee for the past 14 years. I wanted to share my experience this year as it was my first time attending CSCA's Paraeducator Conference. The conference this year was virtual due to COVID-19, and I appreciate my CSCA chapter paying for my registration fee of $75. The virtual event had over 2,300 participants, most of whom were paraeducators and some classified members in other positions. This was a three-day event with opening ceremonies with keynote speakers, our CSCA President Ben Balapena, Superintendent of Instruction Tony Thurmond, and Jonathan Mooney, who is an author and speaker who struggled with ADHD as a child and is now an advocate for special needs students. I had the opportunity to attend live sessions with topics such as Zoom education, the latest trends in social media COVID edition, which is something I wish all parents and educators could listen and watch. It was quite frightening. Verbal Judo was a great class on verbal de-escalation. We had an awesome game night as we played "Are You Smarter Than a Paraeducator?" with our conference game night committee team. We used the Slack application to communicate, and it was nice to message others throughout this and get to network with each other. Our closing ceremonies ended with so many amazing prizes, and no, I did not win. The past few weeks, I've continued to watch many more of the webinars since they are available until April 30th. There are 42 in all, each renting from 30 minutes to two hours. Topics have been on autism, health and wellness for us and students, stress management, student instruction during visual learning. All of them have been wonderful, and I have many resources to print out and show with my coworkers. I will present a log with a certificate of completion to Dr. Mitchell as soon as I complete everything. I look forward to participating in this event next year. My hope is that I can work with all of you to ensure that next year we may send at least one classified member from each school site. Some normal registration cost in the past years has been approximately $130 for a three-day event. I put, I think, is a great price with all the information that was presented. I even received a swag bag. Swag bag, I'm sorry. And I really like the swag bag logo. One last thing, it was nice feeling to have some of the presenters acknowledge us as paraeducators and as classified employees. Whatever you do for our students, first remember, I appreciate you as well as many others do. Those words are several. Most of the time, we don't hear them often enough, so to all my classified employees on here tonight, I do appreciate everything you do. We are essential. Thank you for giving me the time to talk to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Yes, we have, let's see. I'd like to call, the Board acknowledges Anthony Sinatra speaking on behalf of CSCA. Mr. Sinatra, you may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Mitchell, and Cabinet. My name is Anthony Sinatra, CSCA Chapter 451 First Vice President and member of your IT team. I wanted to start by saying I'm excited for the return of staff in its full capacity. Working in IT, we never truly left, and I've been working hard in person since last March. And let me tell you, some of the campuses and district offices could be quite lonely. However, I feel the return of staff in its full capacity, the day after Easter, is not the best decision we can make of the district. As we know, Miami has recently declared a state of emergency due to the surge of spring break attendees. Past experience has shown that there are large spikes in cases after major holidays. I believe it's safe to assume families will gather from both in and out of state, and transmissions of COVID-19 will increase. Granted, we haven't seen data on a holiday since the vaccine has been more readily available, but I think charging into it without this data can be irresponsible and puts staff at an unnecessary risk. I would hate for all our staff to return to work only to be sent home the next week due to a large increase of cases in the high desert. Or worse, having an outbreak at one of our own campuses. The last few weeks, I have visited most of our site's front offices, and most still lack air purifiers and other promised PPE. I am grateful that Business Services has purchased the PPE we need to return to work safely, though I feel we are still lacking in distribution. I'm sure with focus, we may be able to resolve this by the planned return date. However, we should take care that these precautions are implemented properly and our staff feel safe returning. While there are many concerns we currently have for classified staff, I feel that delaying the return of staff by at least one or two weeks would give us the data and time we need to return safely. Just because we can return to work because we barely meet the numbers doesn't mean we should. We need to be better and not strive to be mediocre or good enough. Let's do this right. Let's do this safely, and let's do this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Are there any others?
Yes, yes, President Turner. The Board acknowledges Jennifer Gonzalez. You may unmute yourself.
Can you?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Jennifer Gonzalez, and I am proud to be the second Vice President of our CSCA chapter. I wanted to speak today to voice some of my concerns regarding the date of our return to work order. To begin with, it's understandable to want to prepare for the reopening of schools. However, our members and I want to ensure that we begin this process safely. I'm well aware that this pandemic is something that we've never encountered before and that we're still learning as we go. That being said, I also believe that there is an important distinction between learning and experimenting, especially where our employees are concerned. Returning to work only one day after a major holiday where many employees will potentially be gathering with family and friends demonstrates a carelessness in regards to the safety of our staff. Furthermore, it has been discussed at our chapter meetings that some sites still lack proper safety equipment or that the equipment has yet to be installed at that site. How can we trust that it's safe to return to our sites en masse when the few employees currently working at the site still don't have the necessary equipment that they need? My concerns regarding this fact were addressed yesterday during our meeting with Cabinet. However, I found the answers to be less than satisfactory. We were informed during this meeting that walk-throughs of the school sites would be conducted on Thursday and Friday prior to our return to sites on Monday to ensure that all necessary equipment is in place. My biggest concern with this is if it is discovered on Friday that there is equipment missing, protocols that won't work at certain sites, or trainings that still need to be given, is it honestly to be believed that these problems can be resolved by the following workday when classified staff is set to return? Many of us long for the return of normalcy in our lives, and this does include returning to work. However, I feel that it's important to say that we are not guinea pigs, and I don't appreciate hearing our coworkers returning to work being referred to as a test for what safety precautions will be needed for our students. What I do want to hear is that our classified safety, certificated safety, and our student safety are all being considered in equal measure. I urge this Board to please consider reevaluating the return-to-work date for our classified staff, preferably after the 14-day quarantine period following Easter. This will not only give our sites adequate amount of time to prepare, but also give our staff the appropriate time to quarantine after their Easter gatherings. I would like to thank the ADTA for standing with us in regards to this matter, and thank you, members of the Board, for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Are there any others, Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, I'd like to call to acknowledge for the Board, Ms. Lynette Caddily speaking on behalf of ADTA.
No, I won't be speaking this session.
Okay, my apologies.
It's okay.
So, Madam President, that concludes our speakers. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Okay, moving on to Section 10. No, 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 9, Adoption of the Minutes. 9.01 Board Minutes Approved in Order Filed, Regular Board Meeting of March 9th, 2021. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve.
I have a motion by Trustee LaFrench. Is there a second?
Benz, I second.
I have a second by Trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hines?
I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass 5-0. Okay, moving to Section 10, Consent Agenda. We'll be taking Items 10.02 through 10.14. We have four items from academic services, four items from business services, and three items for from certificated personnel. Are there any items with the trustee? Like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none. May I get a motion to approve? The consent as stated.
I motion to approve the consent as stated.
I have a motion by Trustee LaFrench. Is there a second?
Benz, I second.
Okay, a second by Trustee Benz. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustee Akas?
I.
Trustee Hines?
I.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. Motion pass 5-0. Moving on to Section 11, Items Moved From Consent. There were no, zero items moved from consent. Moving on to Section 12, Staff Reports and Presentations. We, 12.01. Dr. Mitchell? Uh, Dr. Mitchell?
Well, thank you, trustee Turner. Uh, tonight, board, you'll hear from three more of our schools after tonight. We'll have one more uh, to present their professional learning and collaboration plans. More just as a reminder, uh, we asked all plant, all, all school principals to lead a collaborative development of, uh, professional learning and collaboration plans at each of the sites. These plans, um, articulate, uh, the learning needs as described by the staff in its entirety and the commitments made by staff to get, uh, to, uh, improve their, uh, skill knowledge and capacity to provide high-quality instruction to our students. And so, so happy to invite, uh, Ms. Debbie Bowers, Principal at West Creek, uh, to begin our presentations tonight. Ms. Bowers?
Right. Okay. Alright, so good evening, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet members and Adelanto School District Community. I, I'm sharing my screen, correct?
Yeah, we, we, we see your PowerPoint now.
Okay, thank you. So good evening, yeah, good, good evening, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, Cabinet members and Adelanto School District Community. I am Deborah Bowers and I'm the proud pirate principal of West Creek Elementary School. Tonight, I also have with me Howard Carrera, who is my first mate, along with many of our pirate crew. And we're excited to share our professional learning and collaboration plan tonight. Our plan is an ongoing process. It includes all staff members' input to create it. We started with a needs assessment for our teachers. As a leadership team, we analyzed the data and decided which areas would be our folkai. Once we knew what our folkai was, professional development was planned. Then after we started the pro- the professional development, we looked at success criteria that we could use to measure the success of our folkai. Reading comprehension was by far our first area with an emphasis on guided reading and little literature circles in order to meet the needs of our far below basic population. In other words, we wanted to meet the needs of those students who are reading two or more grade levels before, below their grade level. But we also wanted to make sure that all students' reading comprehension needs were being met. Our second folkai is on social emotional learning with an emphasis on self-awareness. With our diverse population of students, we wanted to make sure all students are aware of how important each person is, starting with themselves and how they are a part of a larger community. Professional development started with building our knowledge of universal design for learning, what we call U D L. U D L taught us to look for barriers to learning among our students and how to overcome those barriers. And then once we understood what the barriers were, we looked at materials that guide the development of flexible learning environments which accommodated our guided reading and literature circle focus. Teachers needed access to various genres and levels of books to meet all students' needs. Admin and teachers worked together to find different ways that allowed access to the many different books and literature we have available. During professional development time, teachers shared the programs or strategies they used to access different books and literature for the students. Sorry, guys. And then here is a list of all the ways teachers discovered that they could access material to overcome the barriers identified through U D L. Through this discovery, teachers started using guided reading and literature circles as a learning vehicle for other curricular areas, including math, science, social studies, as well as language arts. Now we are ready to develop the success criteria for reading comprehension. As grade level teams, we held data chats to discuss what success looks like at each grade level. We developed a list of what the teacher is doing and what the students are doing to determine the success of our lessons. We framed the success criteria in I am or I will statements, so it is clear what success looks like for everyone. And this is just a short sampling of the list that we came up with. Our instructional feedback came mainly from each other during distance learning. Teachers led the charge by sharing and discussing their ideas and strategies. If someone was having difficulty with the implementation of something, other teachers would offer the help and guidance along with some suggestions from admin when needed or when asked for. In our week at a glance document that I send out each Friday, we shared ideas that were working well. We found our working well articles on our Zoom walkthroughs. If we see the lesson engaging students, Mr. Carrera and I would contact the teacher and ask for more clarification so we could share it with others. If the teacher felt comfortable, they would actually present information at the next staff development. Sharing your work, sharing our working well ideas is what made the most impact on our teaching this year. Some of the key indicators of increased teacher knowledge and student success included district benchmarks like I C As and Star and Early Literacy Assessments, formative assessments like observation of student learning, student growth towards standards, lesson design and increases attendance of our students. As we move forward, our school culture will become one of clarity and learning. We will know the barriers our students are facing, what materials or strategies we can access to break down those barriers and why we are teaching the concepts we teach. Social emotional learning will address gratitude, self-awareness and social awareness in every area and in every person. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share what the West Creek staff has been focused on for their professional learning and collaboration this year. Are there any questions?
Trustees, do you have any questions? Trustee Benz?
Uh, yes, I have one first thing, thing, thing. Thank you for your presentation. And I, I was just curi- curious, what, what is my, myon? I saw, saw it on the lid list of things there and I've no, never heard of that.
It is a program that's available to every Adelanto student and it is a, oh, like six thousand different books that they can read. So that way teachers were able to have access to, if they wanted to assign students or groups of students books to read based on a particular piece of curriculum that they were teaching, they could do that. Or children can choose to just read any book that they want to on their own. And it reads the book to the children or the children can read the book for themselves. And then it is also linked to A R, so they can then take an A R test on it.
Alright, great. Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Akis.
No, I'm good, but thank you, Debbie. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Akis.
Trustee Hines? No questions. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
And trustee La French?
I have no, uh, questions. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it.
And again, I compare with all of my trustees. Uh, thank you for that wonderful presentation. Um, I heard you mention that you do a weekend and a weekend review to share what's working well. How, how is that working for you? How is it working for other teachers and staff?
Yes, what it is, is every Friday afternoon, I send out, um, something on Padlet. Might be happy to show you that sometime. But it has a daily list of everything that is happening at West Creek. And so that way the staff has quick links and reference to any activities that might be happening. There's the Zoom links for our staff meetings. I also try to include, um, educational articles and quotes that inspire us throughout the week. And one of the items that I put on there at the suggestion of Dr. Mitchell is what's working well. So when I go into a classroom and I see something that is very engaging to the kids and is working really well with the children, like I said, I get the teacher's permission. I ask more about it, ask if they're willing to present it at the next staff meeting. And then once it is discussed, I put it in that week at a glance so that it's there to remind teachers, hey, if you're looking for a strategy, here's something you can do. And that by and far has been one of the most powerful things that we've been doing at West Creek.
Sounds really, really good. Do you have all participating in it? In the week, at a glance?
The week at a glance, every staff member gets it, uh, classified and certificated. And what's working well, I actually have a survey, although they haven't used it much this year, but I do have a survey. If they have something that they would like us to include that they can fill out that survey. But usually it's because they've, they've come to talk to me orally and told me about something that they're doing in their classroom they want me to know about. Or Mr. Carrer and I will see something on our free walkthroughs, Zoom walkthroughs.
I would like to read that. I would like to know what's going on at, at your school. Is this something that you could send to the board?
Absolutely. I can send you guys on the email every Friday if you like. You can delete it or you can read it. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Dr. Mitchell?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bowers, for all your work. We appreciate your, uh, your, your presentation. Thanks so much. So now the board invites, uh, Bert Kristoff, Principal at Eagle Ranch. Bert?
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Let's see. I would like to start off by first saying, um, thank you, uh, President Madam Turner, um, Board of Trustees, Dr. Mitchell and A S D Cabinet. Um, it is a pleasure to be with you tonight. Um, as I move forward through the slides, I just wanted to make one thing clear. Although I am presenting for E R E, this is about, um, our staff, um, teachers, uh, paraprofessionals, um, administration, uh, everyone at E R E. We understand to take on, um, this professional learning and collaborative plan, it takes all of us. So when we first started out, um, let me see, let me go back one more. So when we first started out, we did, um, send out a survey. And, um, our main focus was how can we make our school better? How can we make Eagle Ranch better? Um, we sent out the survey, um, to the teachers. Um, and we wanted to know, um, the opportunity to indicate their top three areas of interest. And at first, when we sent it out, I was kind of worried about, oh my goodness, we're gonna have mixed results, twenty percent here, twenty percent there. Um, and I thought, you know, initially that we would come, maybe come to a stumbling block. But lo and behold, our teachers spoke loud and clear. There were two top vote getters. It was reading literacy and social emotional learning. And we shared these results with our teachers the following meeting. So as we took a look at the survey results, we saw that eighty-four percent of our, our teachers really wanted to focus in on reading literacy skills. We're talking about phonics and word recognition, fluency, comprehension. And so that's a big umbrella to cover, to say the least. Um, and then we saw that seventy, about three out of four of our teachers wanted to dip into, like dive deep into social emotional learning. Um, when it came to not only our students, but our parents, especially in the educational climate that we are in today. So we took those results and we started to formulate a plan for E R E. One of the, uh, fir- first thing that we wanted to do with our folkai number one, reading literacy skills, is we wanted to make it, we're focusing on core reading skills at the primary level and the skills needed to closely, um, read complex texts in the upper elementary levels. One of the things that we wanted to make sure, clear, is that there is a separation gap there. We talk about, um, the primary TK through second grade versus third through fifth grade are, um, intermediate grades. Um, but we understood that there are different skills there, um, for each section. You know, when you go from grade level to grade level. So we wanted to make sure that was clear because in particular, we did not want, we wanted to make sure we were servicing the needs of our students at their level. And as we all know, it's a big difference when you talk second grade through fifth grade. So we wanted to make sure that we were decisive in rolling out our plan at E R E. Um, with that being said, we wanted to make sure that the teachers will learn what, why and how of teaching reading and writing to students to impact reading and responding to the text with written responses. Again, we wanted to make it clear that teachers would learn what, why and how. We thought that that was very important. Now, what would that look like? For teachers, phonics and word recognition vocabulary, fluency, comprehension, text features, structures to support comprehension. What does that look like for students? Letter, name, sounds, phonemes, working in small groups with peers, reading and comprehending complex texts and responding to text in writing. When we talk about folkai number two, the social emotional learning, what we, what our vision want, that we set out to, um, to set out our goal, we wanted to be able to have teachers infused daily S E L lessons, strategies in their daily cla- classroom routines. We, we, especially with doing Zoom classrooms in the environment that they're in today, we have come to understand that not only are, are eagles, our precious eagles are struggling, but our parents also. Um, so we were, we wanted, we're going to be working and we are working with student services when it comes to trauma-informed practices, importance of building those relationships, not only with the students, but with the, with the parents and mining mindfulness strategies also. So what does that look like on a daily basis? For teachers, setting clear expectations and guidelines, giving students choices, asking students questions, working, helping them work through problems, staying calm and smiling when dealing with students. What does it look like for the students? Gaining confidence? Making sure you set daily slash weekly goals, making better decisions, collaborating with others and work and play and navigate, navigate through the world with more effectively. So what does the professional development for their reading and literacy skills look like? We have partnered with, um, San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools where they were going, where they're doing twelve sessions based on three essentials, essential questions. Number one, what standards are being addressed? Number two, in what environment is the teaching and learning taking place? Number three, what is the best delivery model, whole or small group for student learning? S B C S S will ground professional development in the first, best first instruction practices. So the way we set this up is that there would be, there are six sessions for TK through second and then six sessions for third through fifth grade teachers. And they're, they're working with two, um, coordinators, uh, that specialize in, um, curriculum and instruction. For the professional development for S E L, understanding and applying the five collaborative for academic, social and emotional learning, which are as follows. Self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making. Easy to follow steps to how to infuse S E L strategies, techniques into your classroom Zoom routine. Easy to follow steps to how to infuse SEL strategies, techniques into your classroom Zoom routine. The professional collaboration, when we talk about it as a whole, is done weekly. It's data-driven, is focused on best practices. We understand that at ERE, we have the, the knowledge, we have the, the knowledge and the expertise in the room and that we can all become better if we listen to one another and listen and understand what is working for us and how can we infuse this to all our classrooms? Supporting one another, sharing during weekly meetings, during collaboration, and evaluating through evaluation. Instructional feedback will be done by administration and professional development leaders, working with the teachers to identify best effective, effective best practices. Not only the, the teachers, but just staff. We have classified staff who do a wonderful job at ERE also. It's a team effort. Timely feedback is definitely, definitely important. As we know, that if you don't give timely feedback within a certain amount of time, it needs to be done right away. So we can put that into place and develop bi-weekly and monthly goals for our students and for our parents and for everyone, so we can get better. I would like to thank you for, um, for allowing me to present on behalf of ERE. Like I have stated, uh, this is a, a school-wide initiative. And this is not just this year, but for, it will roll into next year and for years to come. So thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Um, I'll start with you, Holly. Trustee Akis, do you have questions?
No, but again, a very good presentation. Thank you. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Trustee Heinz?
No questions. Thank you. Um, that was great presentation. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trustee Vince?
Um, I actually do not have questions at this time. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
That was a nice presentation. I appreciate it. I have one question for you. Can you, um, how often do you have those, um, teacher feedbacks? And can you give me an example of kind of what that looks like?
What, what, they're, they're weekly. They're, um, the way we do it is, uh, myself and Ms. Ridley, we go into, um, we're right now for like our reading literacy right now, we're in the sessions. So we are actually doing, those sessions are weekly. So we have TK through second. They're on Tuesdays with our, um, with our coordinator specialists through San Bernardino County. And then we have third through fifth. They usually do Thursday. And what we do is we take that feedback after their sessions. And then during those sessions that they, where we're learning, we're collaborating with one another, the teachers are in breakout rooms. Then we go in like the following day and we talk with our teachers and we say, okay, how are we going to implement the skills that we've learned? How are we going to infuse those into our classrooms? And so it's a collaborative effort, um, uh, with our teachers. And we just want to make sure that, um, this is a first-year process for us. So to do that, the feedback for, um, with our teachers, we want to make sure that, um, whenever we talk to them, that we all, we understand. I, what I do is after each session, I give like a bullet point of what was covered. And then from there, we give feedback to our teachers of, um, of what we would like to see, what we've learned from those sessions. And so when Ms. Ridley and I go into the Zoom classroom, we're looking for those things that we've discussed the, that week or the week, um, the week following. Does that, does that make sense? Because we want to build off of, off of the, the learning sessions that we're going in. We want to make sure that we're growing and we're improving.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I like how you articulated that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff, for your presentation. And I've been here a lot of years. I've never heard Eagle Ranch referred to as ERE. So that was, that was good to hear that. Um, you know, you mentioned, um, professional development for reading literacy. Now, I know no one is an expert with distant learning and, um, so no one can advise on, based on past experience, how to do this better. I just really appreciate, you know, and all of the schools. I'm saying this to the entire AESD. I think that this is a, a great learning experience for us, something that we will never forget, you know? So when we open next year, we'll be, I'm hoping that we'll be ahead of the game, you know? And, you know, with parents involved. Now, how do you, you mentioned, you involve your parents as well. How do you, how do you get feedback from your parents regarding some, what's working for them and what's not working?
Well, thank, thank you so much, President Turner. You know, as you well know, um, we do need that feedback and we do get that feedback from my parents. I have coffee with the principal. Um, we're on social media. Our, our offices are always open. Phone lines are open to our parents. And, um, we communicate, we are on the phone daily. And, um, our, our teachers, they have class dojo and so they're continually, um, uh, talking to parents of what's working, what's not working. And our teachers are the frontline. Um, you know, they're in the trenches. And, um, my, and to say the least, and our, our teachers at ERE, they are very vocal in a positive way and they let myself and Ms. Ridley know what's working, what's not working. And so we get that feedback from the, from the, um, from the teachers. And then we make a lot of phone calls. We're, we're on the, sometimes I feel like a telemarketer, to be honest with you. We're, 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 we're working those phones. We're, we're, we're definitely working those phones. So within those conversations that the teachers are having, we're having, I'll get advice from my paraprofessionals, what's working. And, and we just gather all that information because I, you know, if I get information, that's just my viewpoint, you know? I'm trying to look at it broadly. But if I get something from a teacher in first grade and then a teacher in fourth, uh, fourth grade, fifth grade, that gives me a clear vision. So I listen to the teachers. I, I listen to, um, what our parents have to say. And our, our teachers do a wonderful job of having that, um, those relationships. I, I spoke about relationships, uh, that, those relationships with the parents. So they feel comfortable of speaking, talking to the, to the parents. And we just had parent-teacher conferences. So all, all this goes hand in hand and there's not a day where we're not on the phone. And, uh, I, I made a phone call today and a, uh, parent said, I wasn't expecting to get the principal. And I said, well, I'm here. So, um, but it, it was, it's those kind of relationships and you just, I hope I answered your question. It is, but you have to talk to the people that are in the trenches. And I get all this feedback. Ms. Ridley is wonderful and she gives me her, her viewpoint and, uh, we just work together as a team.
I like that. And I like, uh, your success criteria for social emotional learning. Set clear expectations and guidelines. That's important. Well, again, great presentation. Congratulations. And hopefully, um, we'll be out of this soon. But I know we're going to learn from all of this and take it into next year when we open back up. Thank you, Mr. Kristoff.
Thank you, everyone.
Dr. Mitchell?
Uh, thank you for that presentation, Mr. Kristoff. And next, the board welcomes Kathy Yukovas, Principal Melva Davis. Kathy?
Can Mr. Kristoff stop sharing so I can share? Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. I appreciate it. Okay. So, um, good evening, President Turner, trustees, Dr. Mitchell, and Cabinet. It is my pleasure to be able to share the Melva Davis Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan with you this evening. I have with me tonight my administrative team, Jennifer Hennow and Bonnie Katz, who are both invaluable to this work. I want to welcome the members of our staff and parents that have joined us tonight as well. This has truly been a dynamic experience for our staff and our teachers have worked extremely hard to create a plan that worked for us. They were involved every step of the way. We have spent the last five years creating a culture of sharing and trust on our campus and that was evident as we began the work on this plan. The very first time I met with Dr. Mitchell, he asked me what I wanted to improve on as a leader. I told him I wanted to have a robust professional learning plan for our staff. He gave us the tool to be able to do this together. So we started out this process by looking at what the staff felt we needed to improve as a school. In the distance learning environment, this was very difficult as we were not all together to throw out ideas, chart them, discuss, and eliminate options. So we had to rely on surveys and subsequent discussions. We started out by doing a see, hear, feel activity altogether. That activity allowed us to internalize what was important to all of us and what we could commit to as a staff. We discussed what technology we had, what we needed, and what we could do with it. We then sent out another survey that asked for three strengths and three challenges that we felt we had as a staff. The results of this survey were shared and discussed with the staff. Using the speed of trust behaviors by Dr. Stephen Covey as a framework, we discussed what we felt we were doing well and areas of needed improvement. Once we had looked at all the lists of strengths and challenges, we took some time to look at data and celebrate what was positive and discuss some areas improved. We used our STAR data for March of 2020 and from the beginning of the year, universal screening. At every staff meeting, Jennifer, Bonnie, and myself would share out all of the positive things that we were seeing in classrooms as we zoomed through. We also used this time to allow teachers to share some of the strategies that they were using in their classrooms that were working. This allowed the teachers to provide staff development to their peers. Everyone had something that was working and allowed the staff to hear about success stories and things that they could try right away in their classrooms. It also built a certain amount of trust and collaboration amongst the staff. By this point in our journey, our staff had had many conversations and several data points to reference. We had discussed our feelings and thoughts about distance learning. Now, what were we going to do? We sent out one last survey and asked the staff, based on what we know now, what strategies could the adults implement that would move our students forward? The results of that survey led us to our two learning folk eye, which are student engagement and literacy. Literacy is a very broad topic and we needed to narrow it down to something that was tangible. The staff decided on academic vocabulary. Looking at our two folk eyes, student engagement and academic vocabulary, we wanted all teachers to have engaging lessons and to use strategies that would make students not only want to come to school, but to be successful. We also looked at tier-two academic vocabulary that could be used across the curriculum. We wanted a common understanding of these terms amongst the staff and students. Our whole staff agreed that reading was important and should be a focus in all subject areas. We looked at the work of Dr. Kate Kinsella regarding language acquisition and vocabulary development and discussed how it pertained to our work. We know that if students feel connected to their teachers, peers, and their school, they do better academically. We also know that they are more willing to come to school if they feel loved and cared about. We also know that this was not going to be easy as we were not there physically with them to give them that pat on the back, a high five, or just to talk to them during passing period. We had to be deliberate about building that relationship with our students. Our students needed us to meet them where they were and to support them socially and emotionally during this time. Literacy is the backbone of student success. Reading is part of all subject areas and finding a way to connect all of us into one area of focus was necessary. Using academic vocabulary across all disciplines of learning would create that coherence across the campus. Having a common language that everyone was using would increase student understanding and create the collective efficacy of our teachers. Our next step was to look at what this would look like for teachers and what this would look like for students. We created an extensive list of success criteria in both areas of focus. Administration conducts daily walkthroughs of classrooms and shares through the appreciative inquiry process what is happening in classrooms. The staff looks forward to hearing about the positive things that we see each week. Our teachers also continue to share what they have learned throughout this process with their peers. Our teachers are truly extraordinary. I have heard every principal say that during their presentations and I agree. But I get to say at last, Melva Davis teachers are absolutely amazing and have made me proud to be a part of this team every day. They are willing to work together during staff meetings and collaboration time and do whatever's necessary to move our students forward. In addition to our teachers providing professional development to each other, we were also able to provide some professional development from outside the district. We know that solid, ongoing professional development cannot happen in forty-five-minute sessions. So we've paid our teachers to spend some extra time with some presenters to gain knowledge and sharpen skills. We brought in Pat Pavelka to do staff development in the area of English Language Arts. Our English Language Arts teachers have four sessions with her throughout the school year. Although math is not a specific area of focus, it's an area that we needed to look at in terms of student success. Kristen Hilty had two, three-hour sessions with all of our math teachers to look at strategies for engagement and instruction in math. Both presenters have worked in various districts, not only in California, but throughout the United States. Pat and Kristen were aware of our academic folk eye and use that information to frame their professional development sessions with teachers. So teachers came up with success criteria that could be seen in classrooms to demonstrate these strategies. We looked at what student engagement looks like for the teacher and the students. This is not a comprehensive list, but some of the things that teachers would need to do to keep students engaged. I will highlight some of the areas that our teachers came up with. This, for the teachers, if you see in the left-hand column, for what the teachers, it may look like, students following along, active participants, and asking questions. For students, this will look like using the chat, holding whiteboards to the camera, and willingness to pick up the mic. For teachers, implement engaging activities in daily lessons. For students, there will be interactive PowerPoints, videos, eye catchers, anything that is total physical response, that's what TPR stands for, and manipulatives. Topics of class are engaging, no, no student interest, making it personalized, culturally relevant, current event-related, making current connections, accessing prior knowledge, real life, and relatable. Pick topics that they like, music, video games, with, and mix with the lessons. Again, the same as above. Make it relatable and personalized. And teachers being excited about their subject area. And for the students, there will be positive, smiling, excitement, prepared. And then giving students a voice, bringing topics that are relevant, allowing students to be engaged in their learning. We have been using the Distance Learning Playbook, written by Douglas Fisher, Nancy Frey, and John Hattie, to discuss the research behind student engagement. We discussed the different types of engagement and how they are very different and need to be addressed in different, different ways. Behavioral engagement, which is students that are good at school, they participate and they turn and work. Cognitive engagement refers to students that are self-regulated, set goals, and plan ahead. Emotional engagement is the affective dimension of learning that involves engaging in discussions, questioning, and seeking help when needed. We also looked at the function of engagement, not just the tools that are used. Knowing what the planned outcome is allows us to choose the appropriate tool to get there. The ten vocabulary words that Melva Davis chose to focus on are on this chart. We then took the time to come up with working definitions that our staff and students would be using to define these words. This is a working document that, as we grow in this process, can be amended as needed. Our teachers are very goal-oriented and wanted to have an endpoint in mind as they moved through this work. They wanted to have time to discuss lessons and talk about what is working, what is not working, and what we can do to improve. They wanted to share ideas and practice using new and different engagement strategies with their students. One thing that they were very clear about is that they wanted to have time to collaborate across disciplines and grade levels and to come up with a clear articulation plan. This plan will be in each subject area and at each grade level. As we move forward in this work, classroom observations with teachers observing other classrooms and student feedback is something that will be very valuable to our staff. These are the goals that we will be working on as a staff for the remainder of this year and into twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is a living document and we are in a constant cycle of plan, do, study, and act. Revisions are made as we adjust to the changing needs of our students. We elicit feedback from the staff using the plus delta missing strategy and we review those results and address any concerns at each meeting. I thank you for allowing me to share the Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan with you tonight. I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank our teachers for all of their hard work in creating this plan and implementing it with their students. You are the reason any of this works. Thank you for all you do to support our students. I am now open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Yukovich. Um, who can I call on? Trustee LaFrench, have any questions?
I go first. Thank you. I want to say thank you for your presentation. Your success criteria, I love between the teachers. Your success criteria, I love between the teachers and the children. That is, that was great. Can you tell me about your student feedback? What was it on and how successful was that? What were the children asked about the student feedback?
That is something that we are working towards in the future. That's something that we have not implemented that part yet. We hope to implement that as we move forward. That's our, that's our, our next steps.
Okay. Well, that's a good idea. I would be curious to know what they think when they're having to let you know how they feel, how they've been going through COVID.
I would love to share that with you. I know our teachers get, you know, individual feedback every day as do we. But um, when, once we get that formal um, feedback, I will love to share that with you.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Great presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Echus, trustee Echus.
Oh, that was great. I enjoyed it very much. Thank you. And say hi to Mr. Y for me.
He can, he can hear you.
Oh, hi.
Trustee Hines.
Hi, no questions. Thank you so much, Kathy. I enjoyed your presentation. And um, I thought it was really informative. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Trustee Benz.
Um, in your student, student and in engagement, you, you have said that you do day, daily walk, walkthroughs by admin, administration and share out of positive strategies in staff meetings. Can I have an example of what you shared out? Just, just one thing.
We share out whatever it is that we saw. So you were playing music when you, when, you know, we were letting the kids in. You were having private conversations, just positive things that we saw that were engagement strategies or, or anything that we saw that was positive, we share at staff meetings. And if I don't do it, the teachers get upset with me, they miss it. So they, they hold me accountable for making sure that I do that at every staff meeting.
All right. Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kathy. Wonderful presentation, well put together as all three presentations. And I'm just really impressed with how everyone this year has been really difficult for everyone. And you guys learn on your feet, you know, as you went. I like the surveys. I like the feedback. I like the collaboration and I'm happy that we were able to give our teachers professional development so they can continue to grow. And I'm just pleased, you know, and can't wait to get back in the classroom next year and continue doing great work. Teachers, you are essential. You know, education, education, staff, teachers, principals, everyone, you are essential. And, and even though I know with this COVID going on, you don't feel like you are. I just want to say that you are. And hi, Mr. Y.
Thank you. He says hello back. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Great presentation. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, trustee Turner. I want to thank and commend all of our principals tonight. What great work. I really thought all of our presentations were really authentic. They really represent the fingerprints of your staff, which was really important. And, and board also wants you to see a theme across our schools of this issue of teacher feedback. Really looking at from an appreciative inquiry lens. This really is a shift for uh, public administrators who have largely been trained uh, in the clinical supervision of teachers to, to go in and assess teachers. And there's a difference between evaluation and coaching. An evaluation is a judgment. It's a time and place of how a teacher is performing. But coaching is far different. Coaching is appreciating the things that teachers are doing very well. Finding ways for teachers to discuss effective strategies with each other and, and, and growing those successful practices across, across the school. We know that teaching is one of the most isolated careers in American business. And we, we seek to de-privatize classroom practice by, by taking advantage of the collective genius the, among the teachers that are in our classrooms and opening up this dialogue about effective practice and discussion. This is, this should be the heart and meat of what we do is discussing with each other what works and, and, and dropping the study of failure that, that school districts have been on this track to doing. We largely have been an industry studying failure. You know, at the end of the year, we look at test scores and we, we automatically think about what kids did not do well. And we ignore all the kids that did well. Same thing goes with teaching. We've been trained to find and point out things that teachers are not doing well. This is not, this does not create a positive work culture, does not create a collegial atmosphere. And so I've asked and been training principals in having an appreciative inquiry lens, or these are things that, things are doing well and we know that all staff are doing some things well in their role. And when we share those practices across the system, we give an opportunity for the entire system to grow. So I just want to thank and commend our principals and, and school leaders here tonight. Also want to commend all of our teachers and staff that are on tonight and supporting your principal presentations. Thanks so much for all that you do. And looking forward to seeing how this great foundation that we're laying will play out when kids come back to campus. Thank you so much, principals. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Okay, we'll move on to twelve point O two, Mr. Kraus. We'll give an update on the long, long range facility master plan. Along with our two trustees, trustee Eckes and trustee Benz who sit on that committee. Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, trustee Turner. So I've asked Mr. Kraus to preface tonight's meeting with the, the board asked a question around the, the CFDs that we presented at the last board meeting and you asked specifically, where are these houses being built? I've asked Michael just to start off our conversation with just a very brief description of where these, this new housing is coming up and then go right into our long-range facilities master plan. We've asked our partners, Renew Clark, to come and describe just the process that they're engaging our district in, in terms of looking at what our facilities need to look like in the next ten, twenty years to actually provide instruction to teacher, to kids for industries that do not exist as yet. We just don't know what our kindergarten kids right now, by the time they graduate from high school, what industries will be available for them to work. But we do know that if we teach children how to think and how to read critically and, and, and give them a good foundation in mathematics, that they'll be successful in career or college. And that is our, and that is our aim and hope. And so with that, Mr. Kraus, thank you.
Michael Assuma, can we give him access? Thank you.
Okay, there you go.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell, members of the board and employees of the district and members of the community that are with us this evening. What a great presentation from our principals every time they present on the great work being done at our sites. And so that's a great segue into what we'll be presenting this evening with our long-range facility master plan update to all of you. Uh, one thing before we get started, I did want to address really quick a comment earlier this evening about the Ms. Cadilly, we do hear your concerns about the ventilation at our school sites and we do understand why it's a concern to you and, and the other staff. And we will be looking at all options to explore what we can do with our COVID funding. Currently at this time, it can't be used for buildings, but it can be used for things such as HVAC units on top of the building. So I will be exploring other options related to the ventilation in our district. Just wanted to put that out there this evening for you related to that funding. And so with that, I'm going to share my screen. Uh, there's, can everybody see my screen thumbs up? Great. Thank you. So here's some exciting news. At the last board meeting, I mentioned the fact that we have some development going on around our district. And so here we have a plot map of, in, in community facility district number one. And we have about eight hundred and forty-three units that are on the schedule to be built. And so this will, in, in CFD one, we have the schools of West Creek and Mesa Linda. So you can see here, I've written in the streets, you can see them a little better. We have Cobalt at the top, Mojave to the left, Tony Ridge, Falling Star and Hopland there, and then Amethyst down at the bottom. But you can see the different tracks and you can see that approximately eight hundred and forty-three units will be potentially being built within the next year or sooner. And so this will affect potentially our long-range facility master plan as we move forward with assessing what that could be as far as the impact. Our hope is that we will get more students in because we'll have families that either have students currently or a school age children or will be starting families. And so that's exciting for us in this plot of land for CFD one. And then looking at the next one, and let me just rotate this one for all of you to be able to get it straight up here. So this one is CFD number four. And here we see that we have about two hundred and seventy-six units going in. And again, these schools in CFD four will be West Creek and Columbia Middle School. So those, those are the schools that are in this area of CFD four. But you can see the cactus on the left, diamond in the bottom, Mojave on the right and Cobalt at the top. And this is where right now there's pretty much raw dirt and they were looking to build here. So again, another exciting opportunity for more families to move into our district and attract people to our school site. So we're excited as we move forward with that. And as Dr. Mitchell stated, we have representatives from Runal Clark this evening that have joined us to give a brief update on the long-range facility master plan. We had a committee meeting recently. And so I'm going to turn it over to Roger Clark and his team. And Roger, if you will unmute yourself and then let me know when you want me to move the slide forward. And Mike, you might have to unmute Roger Clark and Jim Pam. They're with Runal Clark.
There we go. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Mitchell, Michael, thank you for the introduction. With me tonight is Jim Pan, principal from our office. What I'm going to do just very briefly and then open it up for any questions that you have of us is just talk for a minute about the process that we're going to be going through for the long-range facility master plan and, and what the goals and, and what we're trying to achieve with this. And so, Michael, if you could go to the next slide. So this is kind of a nine-step process that we start with. We start with just reviewing all the existing documentation. We just started on step two and we started collecting information, but we started on a step two looking at the visioning and programming. What do you want to have in your facilities? How do you want them to function? What types of technology do you want to have? Do we need to replace portable classrooms? What are all those things that are important to you as a district in terms of the future of your, your facilities? We also like to do community outreach and that's kind of, we'll get to that at the end of this where we talk about next steps. Finding out what's important to your community and to your parents. We also do what's called an educational specification development. So there we're looking at those things that we need to have in the schools, in the design and in the master plan that are important to you as we go forward. And so it's taking that visioning, that community outreach and putting it into a document that kind of forms a menu, if you will, of what it needs to have in the, the schools that's going forward. The next part of it is kind of what we call a boots on the ground. It's a site needs assessment. We go out there, we look at the HVAC systems, the doors, the, the path of travel. We look at restrooms, we look at the conditions, if you will. The lighting, we look at the energy efficiency, we look at kind of everything out there, condition of roofs, windows, all those things. And we make an assessment of what needs to be upgraded. And this is kind of, we look at it from both the vision of what we wanted to achieve, but we also look at it just from protection of assets. If we have a leaking roof, obviously it doesn't matter, doesn't make any sense for us to put new finishes and carpet and things in there if the roof is leaking on it. And then what we come up with is a kind of an educational facilities program. You'll see an example of that in a minute. We prioritize with you and put together cost estimates of what all this is going to cost. And oftentimes, you know, the first blush of this is considerably more than assessed valuation will support or your community can even afford. But that's where the prioritization comes in and we work with you to whittle that down to get to the, the most important things that you need to have in your district and, and what's vital to Adelanto. And then the last part of this is finalizing the document and making presentations to the board, to the community of what it is the plan going forward. So if we can go to the next slide. So it's really a, the long-range master plan is that compilation of information, the policies, statistical data, and it helps you to organize and have a plan for this going forward. This is an example from San Bernardino and this is San Bernardino High School. Obviously a much bigger facility than an elementary or middle school, but again, it's the same sort of level of looking at what types of facilities need to be replaced. How do we plan for the growth that Michael talked about with the CFDs? Where do we plan for that? Do we need to make adjustments in boundaries? All those kinds of questions come into play and that's all the things that we're going to be looking at. If we can go to the next slide. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. The educational specification that I talked about, it kind of starts with that vision of where do we want to go? It, it has teachers involved, it has principals. We had board members at our first session and has community. And, and what we try to do is identify all the components of how do classrooms want to function, what type of technology, even down to the furniture. Do we want to have collaboration spaces? Innovation spaces, all those kinds of things that go into the design of a school and changes that we need to make going forward. We want to have those documented and put into what we call an educational specification so that anyone that picks up that document knows what your plan is about. What are your goals for your schools and your classrooms and your teaching environment? And how best can we support the teachers and principals and staff and especially the students? Because obviously it's about them. We can go to the next page, Michael. So we've identified as a couple of different commu- committees. Excuse me. The first is a kind of an executive committee and this has the board, a couple of board members on it, the superintendent, high-level cabinet, but we have principal, we have others on this that they're kind of looking at over the big picture of everything. And then they're guiding the efforts that we're going through to make sure that we're doing it in the right order and that we're getting the right vision and the right mission, if you will, for this long-range master plan. Then we get down to what we call the design committee and that group involves a number of the people that you see on the right-hand side. The nutrition services, the student services, transportation, maintenance and operations. And those people that really have the, the heart and soul of what's out there at the facilities and what needs to be done. But maybe they don't have all of the vision that you have as administrators and as board members and as community. And so you put the two of those together and one's not necessarily more important than the other. It all kind of has to come together, but they serve a different role. And so that's part of the, the magic of this is getting the input from all these people and, and getting their view of what should happen in your facilities. Michael, if we could go to the next page. So what are the next steps? And if we can go to the last page real quickly. The next part of what we're going to be doing, we're actually starting kind of out of order of what you saw in the first couple of slides, we're actually starting to do the boots on the ground, the needs assessment. We're going to be going through the sites, we're going to be walking the sites, looking at existing conditions. But we're also going to be doing this community outreach. And what we want to do is work with Dr. Mitchell and Michael and staff and, and talk to your community and find out what's important to them, what needs to be done in the schools and make sure that the people in your community are heard. And so that's going to be the focus of our next efforts and meetings. And then we'll circle back with both the executive committee and the design committee after we have that and put together, you know, the plan that we have and then the educational specification. And that forms the backbone for this entire master plan. And so when we have that information plus the boots on the ground information, then we'll start developing the actual physical master plans for each site in your district. Because then we'll have a picture of where the growth is, we'll have a picture of what you want to do. And then we have a picture of the existing conditions and we put all that together and that creates the overall master plan. So I know it sounds simple, but it's, it's a lot of work, but it's going to be a lot of fun though too. And I'll open it up to any questions that you have.
Trustees, do you have any questions regarding?
And so trust, we did have trustees Benz and trustee Eckus attend the, the executive committee meeting. And so I don't know if either of you want to just share your experience or thoughts.
Yes, I would like them to. Who would like to go first, trustee Benz or trustee Echus?
I'll go, I'll go first.
Okay. Trustee Echus.
Well, I liked it. It was a lot of fun. It was refreshing. The information was great. It was nice to have these conversations. I can't explain it. It was just really nice to be able to talk about the future and what we see in our district or what we would like to see in our district. And it was just really nice. I really enjoyed. And it was just really nice. I really enjoyed it. It was one of the first meetings I've ever been to that was just so casual and nice to talk and and just hear everybody's ideas. I'm looking forward to the next one. I don't know the date yet unless it's, I don't know if we have a date yet. But I understand there's two more meetings and I can't wait, you know, to see how, how it flourishes and how it ends up, you know, with everybody's input. So it was, like I said, it was our first meeting and it was really nice. I enjoyed it.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Eckes. Trustee Benz.
Um, it, it was good to see what people wanted for our di- district. You know, a, a, a lot of us in there were look, look, looking to the fu- future and how best to, to, you know, move our dis- district for, forward. And that went to, you know, we talked about class D, 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 design and how it, it would best help, you know, with, with the tech to help te- teachers go from one tech to, to the next with ease. We all know when, when you have to go from the Elmo to the project projector and you got to unplug this to go to the iPad and, you know, Doc, the Dr. Mitch, Mitchell talked, talked about have, having it so, so that it just flowed. It made things ease, ease, easier. We talked about, you know, pos- possible come co- community re- resource, sources that could help our, our stu- students. And it was just, it was nice to see us think, thinking in the future that would best help students, staff, family and the overall dis- district, you know, and to move us for, forward and think long term and not, not just right, right now. So that, that was, was what I like, you know, think, thinking, you know, what, what's our goal? For the long term and to kind of make a la- lasting im- impact. That when we are gone, there's still things there in place or they've been built, built upon that that helped the district. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Eckes and trustee Benz. Trustee Heinz, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions. Um, I just really appreciate the presentation. Thank you. It was succinct and there was so much clarity that I really caught a hold of the vision and it sounds very exciting. Thank you.
Trustee Love French?
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. My only question, uh, do you feel building, um, in CFD one, the eight hundred and forty-three units to be built? And I'm sure that they're going to be multi-level homes. Based on, um, and I know this is the first meeting, do you feel that we have enough space at our schools? Will we have to put in portables to accommodate those additional classrooms? And are we looking at that?
Absolutely. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clark.
Oh, I, I think Michael can probably answer better. Absolutely. So on the next board meeting, we actually have an agenda item related to a demographic study, an updated demographic study. And what that company will come in and do, and they'll also work with Runal Clark as well. They will come in and potentially assess our current facilities capacity. And then let us know five or 10 years out what they see as the capacity of our school sites and if we need to do something. And they will take into account all the new development, including that which was presented this evening. So we're excited to be able to bring that at the next board meeting for potential approval and then get started on that process as well.
One of the other things we'll be doing is a capacity analysis at all of your sites. And so we'll make an assessment of where that growth can be accommodated and, or if we need to add portables or new construction at any site.
And a question on the CFD number four on the two hundred and seventy-six unit, you mentioned West Creek and Columbia. Um, I'm not sure Columbia and West Creek, that's a big, far, the distance is far apart. I, I know, can, can you show that map again?
Yes, I will verify with the company, I apologize here. Let me pull that up. So here's the CFD number four. And just within CFD number four, not necessarily within these, uh, this area where they're doing the development, but in the CFD itself, number four, the area itself. The larger area, this is just, I apologize, this is just a map of where the new homes will go, but it's CFD four is much larger than this. Each CFD is fairly large in their areas, but I definitely can't get that information on the size of each CFD to the board as well.
Okay, because I'm looking net, netting Victorville and Adelanto. Am I correct in saying that? This Columbia is in, in, in Adelanto and West Creek is in Victorville.
I believe you're correct in that, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Can we get copies of those maps for our next board meeting?
They should have been sent to you, but we'll definitely follow up and make sure that if you didn't receive them, we will make sure you have paper copies as well.
Okay, thank you.
Check your email, trustee Eckes.
Send it out tonight, you should have it.
Okay, well, I, I, I might have a problem printing it. So is there a way I can, I can get a copy?
Absolutely. I definitely will get that to you. And I apologize, we just received these. I dated it three twenty-three because they were hot off the press. So I did want to share them. You know, it, it went hand in hand with the long range facility master plan discussion this evening.
Okay, thank you.
And I have another question and this is for you, Mr. Kraus. Our long range facility master plan, will that plan also include repairs to our existing schools such as all the other schools, it's not a part of the CFD one, the CFD four?
Absolutely. The long range facility master plan will assess all fourteen school sites, the district office, professional development center, anywhere that we have a facility on land that the district owns and will identify any needed repairs in any future, as, as Mr. Clark was stating. Any future growth potentially due to development either that you saw this evening? Or there's a, we see a lot of developers pulling permits right now for housing additionally to what was presented tonight. So it will definitely identify that as well as we move forward.
Okay. And so our existing schools, like, um, will our staff be able to participate in recommending repairs to their schools that they see it's needed or will the inspection committee go in and, and make notes of what needs to be done? How will staff be involved in that?
So in two ways, the first way is on the design committee. When we have participation on the design committee, which is a much more robust committee related to the more intricate details of what potentially will go on the plan. And then when Mr. Clark and his team go out to the sites to do the walk around audits, they will be talking to the site administration, they will be talking to the office staff. They'll be talking to various people that are out there about what they've seen, because that's where they get the firsthand knowledge of potentially what the site would like to see as a staff and as we move forward. So that input will be definitely taken into account. As Roger Clark and his team create the long range facility master plan. Absolutely.
I, I know because some of the floors in our multipurpose rooms need to be changed, haven't been changed in some time. And I know all of that will be looked at. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you for the presentation and thank you, trustee Eckes and trustee Benz for serving on that committee. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about what we plan to do. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, okay, moving on to, that's my place here. Okay, section thirteen, policy introduction updates and reading thirteen oh one, adopt and approve second reading of board. Bylaw ninety-three, twenty-three, meeting conduct. I will like to get a motion and then we'll go into discussion. Can I get a motion?
I, I mo- mo- motion to approve. To adopt and approve.
I have a motion by trustee Benz. Can I get a second?
A second.
A second by trustee Love French. Okay, we're in discussion. Um, I, this agenda item, uh, this second reading is to eliminate the nine thirty deadline for German of our meetings. Again, it, it is a board intent to, you know, not to me late in the evening, but sometime, you know, we, there's times when we need to meet later than nine thirty to handle the business of the district based on time constraints. And so I'd like tonight, we're going to get done at a reasonable time. But there's also times where, you know, we cannot break and come out and if we're in closed session. Because I'm planning, a lot of our meetings will have closed session at the end of the meetings. That's what I would like. So our parents can participate and our teachers can get to bed, to bed early. And like right now, we have still a hundred and sixteen participants and that's something that the board has never experienced. So it's giving our community an opportunity to, to engage in our meetings. And on the back end, if we have to go back into closed session, we can. And again, sometimes we can't always just go back to the days and then ask for an extension. So we'll try very hard not to extend the nine thirty, but I just would like just to eliminate that end of meeting time, you know, um, based on this board policy. But we'll do our due diligence to get us out as soon as possible, but like I said, sometime we have to make decisions. And they have to be done in a timely manner. And I don't want us to have to maybe have a special meeting at the next day or the day after to conclude our business. So that's one of the reasons why I brought this agenda item to modify our board policy ninety-three, twenty-three. Are there any other questions or concerns that we may have?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'll start. Um, again, this policy is written so that we end at nine thirty. That's a recommendation from CSBA because they know that after four hours your brain fried. Uh, we should not be making serious decisions for this district. When your brain is fried after four hours, you, you can't comprehend, you can't think straight, you're tired. It's, it's just, uh, I've, I've been on delegate assembly, our meetings were only an hour or two. We can make our meetings end at a decent time. We've done it many times before nine thirty. That's why in the pocket states that we can extend if needed. And that's, that's fair enough. I think that policy is written perfectly and it served our purposes. It works well. And I don't know about the rest of the board, but I do have to get up early. It's hard. Our last board meeting, I think it was, I didn't get to bed till almost one o'clock in the morning. Uh, after our board meetings, I think a lot, I go over things. And I can't rest. I, you know, it was an intense board meeting, a lot of them are. And there's a lot of afterthought and that's really hard for me to stay up that late, not be able to sleep and then get up and have to work. It's just, it's not fair to staff. It's not fair to our, our, our participants. Yes, we have a hundred and thirteen right now. I see. That's wonderful, but it's still early. It's not nine thirty yet. As we get on later and later, they drop off. And I've had people complain because they want to hear what we say after our closed session. They stay up late, they have to work the next day and they want to hear what we discussed. Back in the day, many years ago, I remember we got a lot of flack for having late night meetings because people thought the board was up, up to, up to something. And they thought it was weird how we would be up all night in closed session. What, what is so important for us to have to do that? I think we're responsible enough to have fast meetings, but yet productive ones while we're on our game. And we can pay attention and make good decisions. And I, I personally think this policy is written very well. Again, it gives us that option to have late meetings if we want with the board vote. But other than that, um, I, I don't know what would be a reasonable time besides nine thirty to end a board meeting. And just one more note, from what I understand, lots birds end within two to three hours and less than that at their meetings. To my knowledge, we're the only board that I know of that has these late night meetings. So I just, you know, that's my comment. And I just want to please appeal to the board that we just kind of keep the, keep this policy the way it is because it does fit our, our needs. And I think it's written very well and that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Eckes. Um, trustee Benz?
Um, I know when, when, um, we first came on the board, my, myself, trustee Heinz, trustee Love French. One of the first things that we vote, voted on was to change the ending need, meeting time from ten thirty thirty to nine thirty, thirty. And we pretty much stick with that. And there have been times when we left prior to that because the agenda was, wasn't so packed. Only once in a while, while has it been late. And that's because there was a lot go, going on that had, had to be done or there was a heat heated i- issue that we had to have to discuss, discussion to get the information we need, needed. I see it as we very rare, rarely meet late. We, we do try to meet at that nine thirty, thirty dead, dead deadline. And I mean, we, we should try to stick wi- with, with it. But to have to stop to vote to extend it. And if we're in closed sess- session, we have to stop. Go into the open sess- session, vote, then go into the closed one and then continue it. That itself kills a lo- lot of time. When we could have just done the biz- business and been done with, with it. I think as a board, we, we should, should be mindful of the time and anyways we all should so that we know, you know, what, what time it is. Um, but I, I don't see too much, I don't see too mu- much of an issue with change, changing it from, from my per, per perspect- perspective. Cause again, we, we rare, rarely stay at extra late. So, um, not, that's all.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee Heinz?
Um, I am not in agreement with making an, an adjustment and changing the time. I do agree with both perspectives. I feel that California School Board Association has given us guidelines and we try to operate within those. Because this is information that is across the board for school boards to run smoothly and help them operate in a timely manner. I look at the nine thirty guideline as a boundary. And I believe that uh, since it's been implemented, it has helped the board be more time conscious. And it is also just a guideline so that we could be concise and timely in our dialogue and not extend the time where we have to, you know, keep the staff later. Kind of go into this time of, you know, just drag, dragging things out where it goes later and later. So if it is a situation where this is only an occasional thing, I don't see um, a reason to change the time. Because if, if we're only going to occasionally and, um, not, you know, every now and then go over. Then we should take the time to stop and come out and, and vote to extend it and then be free to continue. So I see that nine thirty as a boundary. Um, I, I think it's, it's great. It's according to the established guidelines for school boards. And so I don't, I don't see a reason that we need to amend that or change it. And so I don't, I don't see a reason that we need to amend that or change it.
Trustee La French?
I would hope that. If we did not have, I, I noticed at one of, one of our meetings that it was haste to come out, haste to go back in. You know, the time limit was there. I noticed that, you know, we're very, it's true that we very rarely go over our time. Sometimes I think, I think that, you know, even from the class that I'm taking, the amount of time that you need to put in in order to study before you get to your board meeting is something that, you know, that we need to. We need to do, we need to take our material and the things that we have and study them before we get here. So we don't have to spend a lot of time asking questions about things that we should have already read. I hope that it's not something that's going to be a recurrence to where we're here. Late, like Ms. Holly just said, you know, staying up till twelve, one o'clock in the morning, you know, after a board meeting, you know, that's a bit excessive. I understand that that particular night, there was a lot, you know, for us and we really needed to get it done. That was the whole thing that I, we really needed to finish that. So I don't, I can see all sides of. What were, I wish that we could be more on board with making the decision. But I can see everyone's side, including, you know, me not wanting to be here lately that night like that. So hopefully this is not something that we will have to do often.
Thank you, Trustee La French.
You know, and. Before final comment, Ms. Turner, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
I noticed, I noticed everybody keeps talking about how we had to come back out of closed session. I know in the past and when I was board president, what I would do is I would sit down with the superintendent, ask what's in closed session, give me a timeline, give me an idea how long we'll be in closed session. And then when we were still in regular session before we went into closed session, we would go ahead and kind of estimate how long we think we're going to be in closed session to avoid that whole situation. And so I would ask the board, you know, if you wanted to extend the meeting another hour, half an hour, two hours, whatever it takes. We would vote on it then, go into closed session. And then if we went over, yeah, of course you have to come back out. But if you time it enough, you actually come back early and you don't even have to worry about it. So that was just kind of a weird situation where we did have to come back out, vote and then go back in and we were over our time. So I get that. But just to let the board know in the future, whether you're president or a board member, just know that you can vote ahead of time before you go into closed session to avoid that whole situation. And once you do that, you usually don't run into that problem unless it's a really rare, rare circumstance. So I just wanted to address that with the board, that that's how you avoid that type of situation happening at any time or in the future. Other than that, I'm done and thank you.
Okay, um, I, I want to comment on something that Trustee Akas just said. Closed session, we don't get an, an agenda. We know what the, the topic is, but we don't know the extent of the conversation. And like this closed session that we went into, you know, I thought it was going to be an hour, but it wasn't. It was longer than that. And, you know, and rightfully so, because we have to educate ourselves. We have to know and not just run through something because we're dealing with, in closed session, we're dealing with employees pretty much. And. We need to hear what's going on, you know, the facts, that's what's going on so we can make intelligent decisions. Not to say we can't do it in a few minutes, you know, if all the information is there. But it was some lengthy discussions in closed session. As far as hearing what our school sites are doing, that's important for me to hear what's happening at our school sites. We're not there. We haven't visited in person, neither have our students in a whole year. You know, and to hear, you know, their profess, their professional learning and collaboration plan is important for me. And before that, we used to hear the school site plans, you know, because we're not there. And so to get information, I don't think any time was wasted tonight. We wanted to hear and, and every presentation was brief and there weren't any lengthy questions. But it's still nine oh five. And so sometime, especially during the month of March, when we're setting the budget, listening to the LCAP presentation, when we're doing our superintendent evaluation, when we're doing other things that may take us, we may run out of time. And like I said, I want to be able to go in a closed session, if we're not done, get it at the end. And to come back out and then to extend that meeting, you know, it, it, it's time consuming to do that. I don't want to be here later than that. That's not my envision sitting here. But I do want to make sure that I make decisions based on knowledge, homework and what's good for our district and not make hasty decisions because I want to get out of here before nine thirty. That's not what I signed up to be on this board to do. My job is to make the right decisions, be prepared, be educated and get the information. So I can make and hear what our community want to hear during public comment period, you know. And so it's important for me. So like I said, I don't want to be here all night and, but I don't want to just rush through decisions just because we're running out of time. And CSBA does not specify ending at a certain time. They said long meetings probably won't be every meeting, a long meeting will not be beneficial to you. But they never say put a time limit on it. We did that ourselves. So that wasn't guidance by CSBA. So with that being said, I will call for the vote. We have a motion by Trustee Benz and a second by Trustee La French.
Is correct. Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Akas?
No.
Trustee Heinz?
Nay.
Trustee La French?
Yes.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye. Motion passed three-two. Moving on to. Thirteen oh two, adopted and approved second reading of. E ninety-three twenty-three, meeting conduct to establish Zoom protocol for board meetings. Okay, I would like to get a motion on this one and then we'll get in a second and get into discussion.
I move to approve.
Have a motion by Trustee Benz.
A second, Akas?
And a second by Trustee Akas. We're in discussion. Okay, this, this protocol came about, which is a great one, by Trustee Akas and our Zoom, Zoom protocol. You know, that was a, going back to that meeting, that was an intense meeting, you know, was a lot of yelling going on about being knocked off the Zoom, you know, technology, it happens. And I understand that, you know, we need to, all board members should be actively involved. And I, and I, and I agree with that. And we have stopped the meeting, you know, if a board member got kicked off or won't even start a board meeting until that board meeting is on. And we've always done that in the past. I like this about. Some time being suspended to make sure, but I, I believe ten minutes is, I just, that's the only thing that I see that I would like to change. Instead of ten minutes, because like I mentioned, if we have five board members that get kicked off and one night we did. Ten times five, that's fifty minutes. So I would like to change that to five. And, you know, just tell the board member, if you can't get on your computer, get on your phone. And that happened to me several meetings, I had to get on my phone when my computer went down. So get back on as soon as possible, but no more than five minutes. And that's just, that's the only comment that I have on this one. Are there any other, are there any comments or any further discussion?
Um, I'll, I'll make a comment. Again, I want to remind everybody that that was one of our longer meetings. It did end at eleven-thirty, I believe, somewhere around there. And I had no voice in that meeting. So between four board members and me out of the conversation, that meeting would have went a lot longer. And trust me, nobody would have went to bed at a decent time that night. So I'm just letting you know now, add me into the conversation and it's a serious meeting. You're talking about going to bed or getting home about one o'clock in the morning and that's serious. And again, I know we've already, you guys have already passed that other agenda item. But I'm very concerned for staff when we start going back into open meetings and they have a long drive home and they've been up since the three.
Trustee Akas, I'm glad you stopped me. That, that motion is passed. We're talking about the Zoom.
Yeah, but I'm also talking about the Zoom meeting, okay? The, these meetings could be very, very long and, you know, that's going to be a problem. But what? On, I would also like the board to know that in this policy, we have to include closed session. There are times where we do eat dinner during closed session. And if we're going to have long meetings, we're going to need to eat during this. And according to this policy, it says that we will not be eating dur- during Zoom meetings. So I wanted to kind of add that in there. And then, let's see, what else? To keep background noise to a minimum, board members need to mute their microphones when not speaking. I understand that, but sometimes, especially in closed session, we all jump in and speak. If we're all busy muting and unmuting, I don't know how that's going to work unless we're really stringent on each person talking like for five minutes and then we move on. Again, when I was board president, that's how you bring in and, and contain your time in closed session is by limiting each person so much time to speak during closed session, so it's not all night. And so that's why I wanted to bring that out. If we're going to keep muting our microphones, especially in closed session, that's going to be a little difficult. So I don't know how the board feels about that. So those were just the two items I wanted to bring to everybody's attention was the no eating and muting your microphones. Those are two things that I think we're going to have to look at in closed session, not necessarily open session.
Well, can, can it say, you know, no, no e- eating dur- during o- open session? You know, just, just like we, we would on the day, day is. You know, so no, and then plus, you know, when we're in Zoom, you'd be amazed at how much the mics pick, pick up. So if you're chew, chewing on crun- crunchy stuff, your, your noise takes over. And in Zoom, just one can be speak, speaking. So if you're chew, chewing or slurp, slurping through the straw or, or your dog is over there playing, playing the drums in the back, background, you know, then that will di- di- distract, you know, what, 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 whatever's go, going on. So may, maybe we, we can say, you know, be my, mindful of e- extra noise and, and then mute if, you know, it's becoming a di- di- distraction, you know, jud- or ju- just be aware to mute if there is e- extra noise com- coming through your mic, mi- microphone. Because some, sometimes we, we don't know, but then the little square comes, comes up on our thing. So the little ring, the little gold square. So if we're just my, mindful of the extra noise, we should mute our, our, ourselves as to not distract who, whoever is actually speak, speaking.
Yeah, I think we're pretty good at doing that now, you know.
Can I interrupt you real briefly? Board, could you tell us what letter you're referring to when you're speaking about change? So that we can get these notes and make the changes that you're asking?
Uh, let's see. L is avoid noy- noisy, so, so, so it's L. So that would be mute. And then the E, eating one is K.
And then we have G. And the ten minutes is C.
Ten minutes. I'm actually, yeah, closed session's over.
Thank you, Board. That's helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, just to clarify, I was looking at H for the accepting closed session for muting the microphones. But, you know, it's, that's at the board's discretion. And then, yeah, K was the one I was looking at for no eating. Like I said, it is kind of the dinner hour and I'm sure if we're respectful of what we eat, maybe that one can be okay in closed session. I don't know, that, that's up to the board.
Eating only in closed session.
Z, is it possible to pull that, open that up so everyone can see what they're reading in case someone doesn't have it?
Yes, Trustee La French.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, other than that, I'm, I'm good. Those were just my two comments.
Trustee Heinz, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Trustee La French, do you have any?
Uh, no, except for the, the noise and the eating that Holly is referring to. I think that is unfair to ask that we have no noise considering that we are all at home. Some of us do have children and dogs. So to say that you will not get any noise, then as adults, you should be able to mute yourself as long as you're able to unmute. Sometimes we can't unmute ourselves, but to say that, I just want to know, like, what's the consequences for, you know, my baby crying or my dog breezy barking? You know, what, what will happen to me?
Time out. You get, get, get a timeout.
Okay, Board, it's nine seventeen. I'm gonna go through A and let's get, let's see if we want to change anything because we're almost at nine thirty. So A is okay. Do anyone have questions on A? Okay, B. District Information Technology Staff was sat there as a meeting host during, during open session. C, this one that I felt that was too long, ten minutes is a long time. I would like to change that to five. D, again, five minutes instead of ten, ten is really long. E. If participants are experienced lagging or skipping, is, do anyone have a question with that one? F, attendants will not, will note that video and audio for session meetings will be recorded and, okay. G, when joining a meeting, all microphones will be on mute. That's okay. H, to keep the background noise to a minimum, board members will mute their microphones when not speaking. That was one that was brought up. Want to leave it? All right, modify it? Right now. Sometime we'll forget we're on mute and talking. And how do they know to?
To unmute.
To unmute. Okay. I, board members, aye, aye. I don't see anything on that one. J. New cellular phones, we could do that. Because sometime we forget to mute our phones. I don't know. K. I think I like the, I like the idea of eating only in closed session. Not in, not in open session. Avoid. L, avoid noisy activities. I don't, like you said, like, like you mentioned, sometime, you know, we're in a house full of the people. We can't restrict a lot of the noise that's going on, especially if we're talking.
I think the word try should make, put in there, try.
Try to avoid.
Avoid, just avoid. We can leave that. Just avoid. Okay, M, we didn't have any questions on that. And, and just be mindful of extra noise. What about that? How can we say that? And, and L, be mindful of extra noise. Can we, can we say that?
Be, be, be mine, mindful of extra noise.
Um be, be, be mine, mindful of extra noise you may be creating through your mic.
Well, if your dog's barking or something, that's gonna be kind of hard cuz it's kind of out of your control.
Right.
So I, that's why I kind of like the idea of putting the word try to avoid noisy activities.
Okay.
Do we wanna bring this back, look at it again? Because it's nine twenty and the superintendent hasn't made his comments and they're very important. So we're not gonna uh wanna table this to bring it back to the next board meeting?
Yes, or, or you guys can vote to extend the meeting tonight cuz we still have trustees' comments and stuff.
Yeah.
Board, we've taken notes on your uh revisions tonight to the policy. So we're, we're happy to bring that back for a third reading.
Okay, we'll bring it back for a third reading.
All right.
So the motion is to approve. Do you wanna change your motion?
Uh to
Uh ta- table it?
To bring it back for a third or?
Bring it for a third reading, yes.
Okay, I mo- motion to bring um the uh nine, three, two, three, E, nine, three, two, two, three, meet, me, meeting con- conduct to establish Zoom protocols for a third read, reading.
I have a motion by trustee Benz to bring um the Zoom um protocol back for a third reading. Can I get a second?
Eckes, I'll second.
Uh trustee Eckes, second. Any further discussion?
I would just recommend that um if we can make our edits and then maybe email that to the superintendent ahead of time. And uh that may shorten our, our next discussions.
Well, if everyone come to the meeting with their, with their discussions, then, because what we have to do is still vote on it.
Right.
Still vote on it. So everyone should be looking at this and uh
We've taken detailed notes, uh trustees, and I'm happy to uh get further notes from each of you in my board calls.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, call for the vote?
Trustee Benz?
Ben, hi.
Trustee Eckes?
Hi.
Trustee Heinz?
Hi.
Trustee LaFrenche?
Hi.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I motion pass. Zero, we agree of the Zoom protocol, policy back for a third reading. The time is nine twenty-three and we still have items on the agenda that we need to complete. Um I would like to extend the meeting no later than ten o'clock. I need a motion to extend no later than ten.
I mo- motion to extend it, extend the me- me- meeting to no late, later than ten o'clock.
Have a motion by trustee of Benz, is there a second?
My second.
Second by trustee LaFrenche, any discussion? Hearing then call for the vote?
Trustee Benz?
Ben, hi.
Trustee Eckes?
Nay.
Trustee Heinz?
Nay.
Trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, yes.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I um motion pass three, two. Um, moving on to super- fourteen superintendent's report, events and future activities significant to the district. Dr. Mitchell?
Uh thank you, trustee Turner. I'll keep my comments short given the hour. Uh the first thing I wanna do is give in the uh feedback from our staff and, and I wanna thank uh uh Ms. Lynn as well as Ms. Cadilly for your comments uh regarding our uh s- staff returning to sites uh scheduled for four or five, but I, I do wanna uh if I can get consensus from the board, I do wanna recommend that we push that date from uh May fifth to uh May nineteenth. Do I have consensus from the board?
April?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry, April, April fifth to April nineteenth, thank you.
You're okay.
I'm sorry, what, what were you mentioning again? I'm sorry.
I'd like to recommend that uh we push our start date back from April fifth to April nineteenth, given the feedback and comments that we've received tonight from staffs.
I, I would like to push it back. Yes, I would like to push it back to the nineteenth because thinking about it, you know, on big holidays like that, I've known we have several holidays and I, I just don't want us to, and one of the reasons why we've been uh proactive in this is to stop the spread, you know, and um Easter is a big holiday for, you know, for a lot of people. And I just don't want us to come back and, and have us to go out again. So I think to be proactive in that, that's a great idea. And thank you um, everyone that voiced your concern about that. I really appreciate that. Um that you voiced your concern and it made me think about that um a lot. And so, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a, a comment, please. Um just to be open and honest and to be transparent. Um honestly, uh for the record, uh CSBA returning to school on April fifth was not a board direction to my understanding or a vote to my knowledge. I didn't know about it until I received my agenda and, and it was explained to me tonight. I appreciate everyone's comments that was expressed tonight, so I just want that to be out there. I honestly did not know about this and for people to make comments, you know, to us, it made me feel funny about that because this was not my direction, my understanding. Uh I agree with the fifteenth, that sounds good. But again, as a board member, I really didn't know anything about this. So if I missed uh this on the agenda or a discussion on this, um please, somebody uh correct me.
Yeah, this was not an agenda item, nor was it an agenda item when I sent staff home uh in December. Uh this is a recommendation from uh my staff uh where we're monitoring daily our COVID rates. We think it's a reasonable request uh to push it back to the nineteenth. And so I would just, just letting the board know uh that I'd like to follow the feedback and guidance from our staff and, and, and union leaders and have taken that feedback and reflected on it while we've been in our meeting tonight. And so uh, and my recommendation is to uh comply with the request and push it back to the nineteenth.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. So I'll get on with the rest of my comments. I do uh wanna say
Dr. Mitchell, we gotta get the consensus. I think you only got them from me and I think trustee Benz, uh we still have LaFrenche. Um trustee Eckes and
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay.
And I, I'm in support and in um agreement with that recommendation, Dr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you.
The trustee LaFrenche?
See your heart.
Yes, great, okay, concernses. Thank you, community, thank you.
Thank you. Uh I do wanna share too that we also uh board uh the state board of education has given us some flexibility, as you know, to not administer the test. Um and we're going to take advantage of that, that uh flexibility uh and, and relieve our teachers and students and parents of taking the lar- the, the uh state test for co- uh for CASP. Uh the state board has asked that whatever assessment that we give is aligned to the common core state standards is available to assess in grades three to eight and eleven, of course, we don't have eleven. And then our administered uh uniformly across our district, they are asking, they also are asking that any assessment that we give has the ability to be disaggregated by student groups and, and programs as well. So we have selected to administer uh what we call the interim assessment blocks. They're part of the state's S-BAC system, and so they meet all that criteria and then allow us to tailor uh the assessments to make them smaller and test some priority standards. This week, I've asked uh teachers to give us some input on the standards that we should assess in the spring, and so teachers are currently doing that. And then we'll, we will build the assessment accordingly, according to uh those power standards that teachers by grade level think are important questions for us to answer. We want to be able to uh show uh where students are uh in relation to proficiency on the common core state standards to the board as well as to the state, as well as it also informs our budgeting, our LCAP process and our planning for next year. So we think it's important to give uh a, a, an assessment and we appreciate the, the flexibility afforded to us by the state board of education. I also wanna just report some positive news on, on our stuff with the superintendent. This recent round that we've done with stuff with the superintendent on March second, fourth, sixteenth and eighteenth, we had a total uh participants of three hundred and fifty-five people. Uh that's, that's up by three hundred and thirty-eight percent from the last round. As you know, we had uh some small participation in the first round. Second round, we're getting bigger and, and the third round, uh we will feature uh to renew Clark's uh point tonight about gathering feedback from the staff as it relates to the, to the long ways uh facilities master plan. So we will uh include that in the next round of support to superintendent to get an idea from the community about how they want schools to look and offer uh going into the future. So that will be one item on our next round of support to superintendent that will be late in the spring. Um, we are working hard um to develop the learning recovery summer session. Um the committees have finished meeting this week, and so we expect to have a board presentation on what the uh summer session will look like on the uh, on the uh April thirteenth board meeting. Okay, and then let me see what else I can do quickly. Um I do wanna speak to to back, back to the uh re- uh have staff returning to work. So um number one, uh I wanna, I wanna, I wanna say how uh committed this staff has been to protecting the health and safety of our staff. We're one of the few districts in the high desert that has not required staff to work every day. We put staff, we sent staff home back in, in December. And so in April, it'll be close to four months, uh the staff have been home. And so we, we are, we have shown our responsiveness to the health and, and safety of our staff uh by in those actions, then we will continue to be responsive. If, when staff returns on April nineteenth and we see COVID rates going through the roof and outbreaks happening, well, we, we will do the same thing. So I want to assure staff that we have demonstrated our, our willingness uh to protect staff as, as, you know, protect safety of staff and students. Uh in preparation for reopening, we have ordered a temperature kiosks for every school, gowns, gloves, face shields, face masks, hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes, electrostatic disinfectant sprays, handheld uh temperature thermometers, reusable water bottles for staff and students, plexiglass deck shields for staff, desk shields for students, bipolar ionization devices for HVAC units. Our HVAC filters have mer- mer thirteen filters if they allow. Uh we have some easy ups for shade in front of, in front of entrances. We have A frames to place signage all over, all in the front of schools and around schools to direct people where to go. We've installed auto flush toilet valves. We've installed hands-free hand, hand towel dispensers. We've, we've purchased HEPA L filters for every classroom. We've purchased new front office computers and AV equipment, including large TV screens to give information. We even started door buzzers at every school to allow for uh one person to enter the office at the same time. We've updated our custodial carts. We've, we've installed electric, electric pencil sharpeners so kids don't have to spin the handle. Um of course, we bought hotspots, Chromebooks, dot cams, upgraded our uh phone systems. And then um we also will be uh making sure that every staff comes into a single point of entry for all schools. Um the temperature kiosks that you walk through and take temperatures will all be set up uh this week. All the PPE is ready to just, the PPE equipment is ready to distribute to staff. Uh we have COVID nineteen signage uh that will be placed all around the site, including hand washing, social distancing and mandatory mask signage. We, we will have isolation rooms uh for all sites in the event that we have sus- suspected uh COVID case. Uh we, we will be installing additional plexigas across other areas in district like uh secretary stations and in common areas. Um, of course, additional hand sanitizer units. And then we will be uh having a clipboard or some type of a system in every classroom so we can document who's been in and out of classrooms uh so that teachers and staff know uh, you know, when, 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 when they've been cleaned, who's entered after cleaning and so on and so forth. Um we also are still looking into uh a safe and secure way to, for, for students to return their textbooks. We know that those textbooks will carry some germs, and so we're looking at creative ways to do that. And uh so yeah, so we, so our, our custodians did return this week. And so they are deep cleaning schools and, and uh offices as we speak right now. So that, so just to let the board and the community know our efforts to uh keep staff and students safe. When we do return, now uh the return date will be uh April nineteenth. Also, uh I want to invite the board for our next uh teacher professional development date uh happening on April fifth. And we start at eight o'clock and we'll be asking board to make welcoming comments along with uh myself and Ms. Cadilly and Ms. Lynn uh to welcome our teachers uh for the date. And that, that just looks like she just heard that for the first time, cuz she did. Um, board, we have a special board workshop this Saturday, uh nine to twelve. Will we continue on work and becoming an effective governance team? Um I think we're well on our way to do that. And also, board, um with just one other consideration, does the board want to consider an in-person board meeting for April twenty-seventh? Of course, we would not have an audience, but we could uh meet in person and in stream the audience in as we're doing now. So if the board wants to consider that, just the consensus around that, we will begin to organize ourselves to have our first board meeting in person, April twenty-seventh.
I would love that.
Okay, so we have Holly, um trustee Benz?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes, I would be open to that.
Trustee LaFrenche?
Yes.
And yes, myself. So we'll have our uh first in-person board meeting on the twenty-seventh. Um then, uh but we will not have um any audience in the, in the boardroom, just the essential staff such as um cabinet, uh Ms. LeVey and IT. Am I correct, Dr. Mitchell?
That is correct. The twenty-seventh is the workshop. Is that when we're gonna open?
Sorry, I'm sorry, uh April twenty-seventh is the second board meeting in April where I'm proposing that we have our first.
Okay.
Saturday is on Zoom. Uh it'll be our special board workshop working on effective board governance.
Okay.
I just have one real quick question. Um will we have the opportunity to um see what that layout is in that room, shields and um how they're going to be uh desks and um what side of the room people are gonna be on?
Yes, absolutely. Uh Mr. Kraus is just excited to get that room set up for us. He's gonna, he's gonna randomly get that room going. And so what we'll do, board, is take some pictures of the, of the board layout and send it to you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
And not only that, uh Dr. Mitchell, also um we need to look at our, our closed session room as well.
Absolutely.
We have the social distance in there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks so much, board. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Okay, moving on to um trustee comments. I'll start with trustee Heinz.
Oh, thank you. Uh, I, I was just, I'm gonna keep it brief. But I was just, um even prior to uh what Dr. Mitchell just shared about changing the date, I wanted to, you know, just say that I understand and I hear what CSA and everyone that commented was speaking of, and I wanna say thank you for sharing this evening. And I do hear and understand your concerns. And I feel that your questions and your comments are valid and probably many of us, you know, are wondering and we have questions and and uh so for us to be able to hear it and see it through, that's, thank you for the opportunity. Um because this is so unknown, you know, I was speaking to a teenager the other day and uh she sort of put it in perspective for me that she was journaling, you know, about her family, her grandparents and things that were happening and how rough the school year was for her. Um because she felt like she was in the middle, you know, she wasn't a kindergartner just starting out. And she wasn't at You know, she wasn't a kindergartner just starting out, and she wasn't at the end as a senior. But so now she's experienced um both sides, you know, of um how it used to be, how it is now, and then looking forward to how it's going to be. So she she just summarized and it said, you know, I feel like I'm literally living in historical times. And then she's like, and I know like when I read the diary of Anne Frank, Anne Frank was writing, but she didn't realize that she was writing, you know, what she was writing and sharing was history. And so that that just gave me another perspective. And uh so I believe that our superintendent continues to look at all the options, you know, with priority being keeping us all safe. And um I want to say, don't ever stop asking questions and voicing opinions and reaching out and sharing your concerns. I appreciate hearing them. It helps me. I believe it helps the board, the entire board and the superintendent when we have to make big decisions. And so just thank you so much staff, you know, administration and parents. Truly, truly appreciate. Thank you.
Trustee Hines, trustee Ekis?
Okay, yeah, just real quick. Uh, once again, I wanted to uh uh remind everyone to do their research and uh education on the COVID vaccines. Uh, to my knowledge, they're not mandatory. Please know the different vaccines are and what's in them. Uh, it's your body, it's your choice. I pray everyone stays healthy and well. It's great to see people getting out and enjoying the weather and openings. And I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ekis. Trustee Hines, I mean, I'm sorry, trustee Benz?
Uh uh firstly, I want to tell uh everyone, hang in there. We're in the last leg of the year. I like to joke and say that my Zoom cla- classes are like like a se- seance. Do you hear me? Can you make ma- make a noise? Because that that's where my my kids kids are. It's that or I'm Dora, Dora the the explorer explorer. So what what's the main ma- main idea? You know, my 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 students are over it. I'm o- over it. If I don't say Zoom ever again in my life, it'll be too soon. But it is for us to be safe and we just got to hang in there, grin and bear bear it. My class will go back in part-time next week. So I will tell you how that that goes. Um, but I just want to thank you all. I know we've all been ta- taken out out of our com- comfort zone. Um, we've had to change the way we teach, you know. I have struggled every step of the way. So, but I just want to thank you. I know the parents, they may not say it, they may have, I hope so, but I'm sure that they are think thinking thankful too, because I know you are put putting in way more, you know, just because we aren't in the class, it doesn't mean the work isn't there. So, you know, and then for those who have been in the class classroom, again, I just want to thank thank you all, and I really do see our di- district move, moving in a pos- positive. So have a great great night and a blessed East Easter.
Thank you, trustee Benz. Trustee La French? I thought we were gonna have to cut you off because it would have been a five minutes of Benz. Okay, okay, sorry. I wanted to say um I wanted to say that after listening to, you know, all the principles, I really wanted to say I jotted down a couple of things this time. I wanted to say thank you for your commitment to your professional growth this past year. It shows, it is so wonderful to hear the different things that are going on and how you guys have put these plans in way better than what we listened to the last time about the um your the scores and the colors and, you know, the dashboards. This is very informative and I really appreciate listening to how you have taken your um professional growth in or, you know, using them. I've already gone off my paper. Um, another thing I wanted to say is that I wanted to say um thank you for the commitment to our parents as well. As a parent, um, parents are doing their best to help their children at home during this time, and I know that um us as parents aren't perfect. We're trying. This is a new um platform for us as well, but the parents that are there that are supporting their children that are, you know, helping with the Zoom, I think that everyone's technology skills, I know minds have, has just sheared. And another thing that I wanted to say was that I had a conversation with someone in my class over the weekend that even though it seems like um we all want to do away with Zoom and then just put it behind us and move forward. If we think about all of the skills that we have learned that going forward, how we can better help and serve our children in all different platforms, I think that it'll be something that we will take with us even when we move back to be able to communicate with parents and have conferences and things when they can't make it. It's still a lot of things that, good things that have come out of it. Uh, my last thing that I wanted to say was uh this past year, I know that it's it's been very hard on us. However, um stay strong, stay safe, be well. And um we appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you. Thank you, trustee La French. Um again, thank you um Dr. Mitchell for um your continuous guidance in the district. Um, thank you, community. Thank you, staff. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, uh classified staff for your thoughts on coming back to school. It really touched our hearts and um made us make the decision to extend that time. Um, and I thank you, Dr. Mitchell, um for asking the board, you know, to consider that. Um, your voice do count. We do hear you. Um, teachers, principals, I mean, again, you know, I I said that earlier. I know we're all in a learning curve right now with distant learning. And um I know that we're never gonna forget this, and I just want to thank you for being out there. I know you've had to reach hard, you know, down and grab something out of the goodie bag every day to make this work, and I appreciate that. Um, to the union presidents, thank you for what you do. And I thank you cabinet for what you do. I'm really looking for a facility um master plan, you know, so we can improve our schools. And when our kids come back, bring them back to a world-class environment that they're gonna be happy to come back to. And um and as well as the teachers, you know, bringing in, you know, technology and support, you know, with the professional development, you know, that you so desperately needed. Um, just want to say thank you. Continue to do what we do. We're in this together. And, you know, um again, I just want to, you know, um for us here today, every day is not guaranteed, and so many people have left us going to the grocery store thinking you're gonna bring home your eggs and and your and your milk, and you don't make it home. You know, we don't think of things like that. So we have to, you know, be grateful for what we do have, waking up every day. And I just want to say um you guys are important to me. You know, I sat on this board, not just to sit on this board, but to make a difference in our community. And I know you you do the same. You didn't become a teacher just to not educate students. You know, you work hard, and this year has really proved it, how dedicated you are. And I just want you to know that. Not just teachers, but our our kitchens, our our CNS workers, you know, that put those lunches out every day. You know, to our our secretaries that make those calls, to our custodial staff, to our bus drivers that help, you know, um and and also to the district, you know, to be able to pay everyone, continue to pay you your salaries, you know, that that's a blessing in itself. So I just want to say, you know, we're in this together. Hang in there, and we'll see you in a couple weeks. Thank you. So with that being said, the time is nine fifty. I want a motion to adjourn.
Ekis, I motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by trustee Ekis. Is there a second?
I second.
A second by trustee La French. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, hi.
Trustee Ekis?
Hi.
Trustee Hines?
Hi.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
And trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I. And Mrs. LeVey, I didn't forget about you. I don't know what we could do if it wasn't for you. So you are.
Amen. Yes. Thank you.
You're our backbone. Okay, the time is nine fifty. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.